All right, thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Goss Town School Board Meeting. It is October 7, 2020. I'm going to call the meeting at 6 o'clock. I do need to read the Governor's Executive Order, so just bear with me. Consistent with Governor Sununu's Executive Order 2020-04 Emergency Order Number 12, Board Members will be joined via a Zoom conference call for the October 7, 2020 Goss Town School Board Meeting. The meeting can be viewed on GTV 16 on demand and will also be streamed live on the GTV YouTube channel. The public is invited to call 603-766-5646, enter participant code 685562. If you wish to make a public comment at the beginning of the meeting, please wait for the instructions and then press 9. Your microphone will be unmuted and you will be directed to state your name and address prior to making your public comment. You could also have emailed public comment to Denise Morin at sau19.org prior to 4 o'clock this afternoon. I do need to take attendance. When I call your name, just say here and if you are alone in the room. I'm going to start with school board members. Let's see, Reda Chaffey.
Here and alone.
Okay, Dan Kudier, I don't think he's here yet. Ginny McKinnon.
Here and alone.
Janelle O'Brien.
Here and alone.
Jared Talbot.
Presenting alone.
Thank you. Ellen Vermakowicz.
Here and alone.
Okay, I don't think Susanna Bouzelle has signed on yet. We're going to go to SAU administrators. We have Brian Balki, Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening, everyone. I am here and I'm with Mr. Gross and Mrs. Morin at the SAU.
Perfect, thank you. Mary Claire Berry is our Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, I'm here and I'm alone.
Hi. Dr. Jennifer Doloff, our Special Ed Director.
I am here and I'm alone.
Thank you. Kate McGrath, our HR Director.
I'm here and alone.
Thank you. Steven Bourget, our IT Director.
Here and alone.
Thank you. And we have Dawn Tabor standing in for Randy Lauren, our facilitator, facilitating director, can't speak tonight.
Hi, here and alone.
There you are, thank you. Our Principals, Kathy Stoyl, Principal at Glen Lake. She's not here.
Here and alone.
Oh, you are, there you are, okay. Jerry St. Jolay, the Principal at Bartlett.
I'm here and I'm alone.
Okay, Suzanne Pishka, Principal at Maple Avenue.
Hi, I'm here and alone.
Thank you. Brandy Williams, she's the Assistant Principal and Special Ed Director, Facilities for Bartlett and Glen Lake.
I'm here and alone.
Thank you. Lisa Johnson is the Assistant Principal at Maple Avenue.
I'm here and alone.
Thanks. Wendy Kohler, the Principal at Mountain View.
Hey, I'm here and alone.
Great. Josh Lewis, the Assistant Principal at Mountain View.
I'm here and I'm alone.
Great. Frank McBride, the High School Principal.
Here and I'm alone.
Hi, Frank. And Kim McCann, the Assistant Principal at the High School, is she here?
Yes, I'm here and I'm alone.
I thought I saw you, thank you. And our Budget Committee members, we have Cole Reel, the Chairman of the Budget Committee.
Here and alone.
Hi, Jeffrey O'Brien, the Vice Chairman.
Here and alone.
Thank you. Bill Cortez.
Here and alone.
Fred Platt.
Here and alone.
Thank you. Let's see, Skylar Sund.
I thought I saw him. He is here.
He is here.
Might be a mute issue, but he is on the call.
Okay, yeah, I thought I saw his name. Eileen McNinnity. I thought I saw her too.
Eileen is here as well.
Okay. Yeah, I thought I saw her. Yep, there she is. I think she's trying to unmute herself.
Yeah, it's not doing what I wanted to do yet.
All you have to do to unmute yourself if you're on a computer is hit the spacebar.
Oh, right, that's true.
Yeah, I know that, but that wasn't working.
Right. Greg Flagle.
Yes, here and alone.
And I think that's everyone that I had. Did I miss anyone?
I thought I saw her too.
Eileen is here as well.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, stuff like that. Did I get everybody?
Somebody is.
Somebody's talking.
Correct.
All right, so let's go on with our meeting. If everybody can stand and rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Which stands one nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Is there a public comment tonight, Scott?
Let me check. There is, there's no one on the line. I also should let you know that I did receive a call from Dick Fletcher, who was on the Budget Committee as the Water Precinct Representative for the Village.
Yes.
And he said that he watched the meeting on GTV. He had difficulties getting on to Zoom, but he is watching it.
Okay.
Try to call into the bridge line, but I just want to let, let everybody know that Dick was participating.
Okay, so he's going to, you think he might try to call in?
Yes, he might. And I'll let you know.
Yeah, let me know if he does. All right, well, then I'm going to close public comment if there isn't any. And we're going to start our budget work. Welcome back, everybody. This is part two of our presentations from our administrators. On Monday, we were able to do the overview of the budget with the Superintendent's Proposed Budget. We heard from Glen Lake and the Food Service. So tonight, we're going to finish up with Bartlett, Maple, Mountain View, and the High School. And like Monday, I will take questions at the end of each school presentation. I'll make sure that I give everybody enough time to comment or question. There's a lot of you, so just give me some patience to get through. Brian and Scott are helping. If you're on video, wave your hand. Do a little icon or something, yell out my name, whatever. I want to give everybody an opportunity to ask a question or speak if you need to. And other than that, Brian, is there anything you would like to say before we get started on our presentations?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to once again thank all the Budget Committee members for being with us this evening. And I'd like to thank all the School Board members for your many, many hours of service. Madam Chair, I did want to let you know, I received an email from Mrs. Vermakowicz. She's having some difficulty seeing the screen. Ellen, we can see you okay, and she said she can hear okay. So Ellen might not have the benefit of the slides when they're up. But so she asked me to share that with you. And apart from that, this evening, we'll be starting with Bartlett. So whenever the board is ready, we'll hand it off to Jerry St. Jolay.
Sounds good, thank you.
And if I may, Heather, sorry to interrupt, but Susanna Bouzelle just entered at 6:07 for the minutes, so for Denise's benefit, so Susanna is on the line.
Thank you, Scott. Hi, Susanna, welcome.
Hi, sorry I'm late.
That's okay, no worries. All right, well, you didn't miss anything, we're just getting started. So if everybody's ready, we can start with Bartlett.
Gary.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting me go first, that's awesome. Bartlett Elementary School, the budget request for 2021 to 22. I'll start by saying that there's not much in here, we're trying to be very lean. So we started, I'll go over last year, the FY 2021 operating budget was $2,725,394. The base budget for 2022 is $2,900,668. We're only asking for $6,587 new, so that's pretty flat. The FY 2022 requested total is $2,907,255. So as you can see on the bottom of that, the difference is 181,861. We're very steady at Bartlett, so the projected class sizes for next year remain in our normal range between like 16 and 20 students. So next year is actually awesome, it's going to be 16, 16, 16, and 18. So, and we have three teachers for each grade as we have for a few years. Historical enrollment, it was about 194 was the lowest. We did bump up to 210 students in the 2018-19 year. We've waned off a little bit, and I'm projecting 197 for next year. So we all fit tight and perfect at 197. Staffing overview for 2021-22, we have 12 classroom teachers. We have a new library media specialist. We have one reading specialist, two Title I teachers, and I will put a little plug in, we were able to add a third one this year with grant funding that was just started, so that's helpful. ELL teacher, we share with two other schools, so we have her for .3. Art and peer each .4. We're looking for an art teacher, we've got a couple applicants. If you know anyone that wants to teach art, have them apply, please. Music, it's a .5 position. Paras, we have 11, we're putting in for next year for 11 special educators, special ed paras, and we always have a half library position. So that is a little bit of an increase due to students moving up from Glen Lake. Secretaries, we have one year round and one school year secretary. One of those does half special ed and half regular secretarial work. Three special education teachers. .8 for speech pathologist. We have OT .7 that we share. School psychologist that we share, we have .3. A guidance counselor that we also share for .8. One nurse, two custodians, 1.4 administration, so myself and Brandy Williams, and kitchen, one full-time and two part-time. So not many changes there.
So Jerry, this is Scott, I just wanted to add that for the benefit of some of the Budget Committee members, Title I, those are grant-funded positions. They are not contained in the general fund budget, which is what typically you oversee. Just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, so that's extra, extras teachers for us without affecting the budget, which is nice. So noteworthy, there's really not many noteworthy changes. We have $1,000 increase in technical program equipment rental, which I believe is the same across schools. $2,200 increase in technical program non-capital software. $2,800 increase in media, non-capital software for Brain Pop and Brain Pop Junior. That's something that with our new librarian, we wanted to be on the same page and get up to the level that Maple Ave has and offer the same resources to our students. So we were lucky enough to put that in the budget, and that was, is being supported. And a $1,910 decrease in operating, building, maintenance.
So, so once again, I just want to interject here for the Budget Committee, that last line, the $1,900 decrease in operating maintenance. What, you're going to see that across all of our schools. And essentially, we had a contract with a company to do all of our HVAC maintenance. That's anything ranging from replacing filters, retake, replacing belts, doing just routine maintenance on our HVAC systems. This past year, we were fortunate enough to hire a maintenance person, actually was a replacement maintenance person, who has excellent HVAC skills. So in total, it's about $40,000 of maintenance that we have taken off in terms of our contracted services, because we have someone on staff who can perform those duties as well as some repairs, some smaller type repair. So it's a big game changer for us and facilities, and I just wanted to acknowledge that you're going to see it in all other presentations.
So most of our school's proposed budget is to keep maintaining current programming and services. There were not many changes. And, and I think things are running pretty well. It's, I think we're spending a little bit more this year for COVID, so we're trying to be fiscally responsible for next year as well. Any questions?
Great, thank you so much. Scott, can you put me back up so I can see everybody's face? So I see Fred has a question or comment. Go ahead, Fred.
I just asked by chat, there was a jump in attendance projected from last year. How do you project the attendance? On what basis do you do that?
So there's a few different dates that we use for that. We actually were up quite high last year, and we had a few, quite a few students move out over the summer. We've had 29 new move-ins since school started. So I was taking information that we have now, and then I always add a couple new students for first grade. And then we look based on Glen Lake School, so it's usually been pretty close. I was, our end of the year number for last year dipped a lot more than it really is. So there wasn't really that few students.
Heather, if I can just add to that, one of the, one of the things that we have to contend with when students are entering first grade is not all students attend Glen Lake School as kindergarteners. We have many families that attend private kindergarten because it's full day. So we have a historical perspective on how many kids we typically pick up whose children did not attend Glen Lake. So that is a factor when we do enrollment projections. And Madam Chair, I see that Mrs. Vermakowicz has her hand up.
Yes, I saw that. Thanks, Brian. Go ahead, Ellen. Ellen, you're still muted. You're still muted, Ellen, we can't hear you.
Perhaps she could chat, use the chat feature.
I'm not sure she knows how. Scott, can you unmute her?
I will try.
Okay.
Yeah, unfortunately, I can't do that.
All right.
I'll type a message in for her.
All right, that'll be great. And while you're doing that, Ginny has a question. Go ahead, Ginny.
This is the same question I had asked the other night. I don't think Jerry was here. And Jerry, I had spoken to some friends of mine, therapists in a different district. And they were saying it was difficult for them going from school to school to school in their district to get PPE that they needed, especially for the younger kids, where they like to suit up a little bit more because of, you know, how little kids are. And I'm just wondering, are, do you have PPE gowns? And whatever people might feel more comfortable with them needing readily available for people who are going from school to school to school that, you know, that are readily available, that they can just grab? Or do they have to, you know, go to the office and have somebody unlock a door and all of that kind of stuff to get what they need?
So we have lots of PPE. We have everything that, that we've asked for. And we've even found some students that we found better PPE, like a baseball cap or something that goes down or specific things that staff have requested. So we do have plenty of PPE. I met with each staff individually before school started, asked them what they wanted, got it for them. I continually check in with them. We have, everything is locked up in the nurse's office, but the nurse also knows to give it to them whenever they need it. So they can go through the nurse, or if they feel better, they come through me. So we, we have lots of PPE, and we're very good at using it now.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Ellen, how are we doing? Oh, wait, did I see another hand? Does anybody else have a question? All right.
I texted Ellen to type her question into the chat box or to text it to me. So we can always come back.
All right, yeah, I don't see anything. All right, so before we close, Bartlett, does anybody else have any questions or comments before we move on to Maple?
I just wanted to let Ginny know that for, in terms of the PPE, you know, throughout all of the schools, including New Boston, we were very proactive in ordering that very early. Not to mention, not just gowns and face shields and masks, but also desk shields and other dividers. And for the most part, I think almost all of our schools have a supply through the end of the first semester, and some schools have it even beyond that. So as we start to see needs for, to order future PPE, we'll go ahead and we'll do that. But all of them are well-supplied to last through the first semester. So just want to let you know.
My, my point, I think, Scott, is, is it accessible to people, especially people that are not in one school all day? But, you know, scoop the one school and then scoop to the other.
Yeah, so it's, the, there is a more than ample supply for even our itinerant staff to, to go and obtain at any school they go to.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, thank you, Scott. All right, so if we're done with Bartlett, let's move on to Maple Avenue.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you can hear me. So here is our budget request for 21-22. The 21 FY 21 budget was $5,252,160. And our base budget for FY 22 is $5,492,400. The new for FY 22 is $4,831, with a proposed budget for FY 22 of $5,496,835. And the difference being $244,675.
Pardon me, Suzanne, before we go further, I wanted to let the Chair know that Tim Stetson has entered the meeting at 6:20 PM.
All right, perfect, thank you. All right, go ahead, go on, Mrs. Pishka.
Okay, thank you. So our enrollment, you can see the total enrollment that we had proposed for this current year is 536 students. And due to our hybrid model, that has obviously adjusted, but that was our proposed enrollment. And we would have gotten there if we had everyone full. Knowing that, going forward, our enrollment for first grade is projected at 131. That's using our numbers from Glen Lake and then our non-Glen Lake numbers. And as Brian mentioned, we look at historical information. And over time, we have increased every summer with new registrations from non-Glen Lake students. So that is kind of the wild card for us. We, we're never really sure how many students will receive from places other than Glen Lake. So first grade is definitely the wild card. We have seven teachers in that grade to keep the numbers as low as possible. But even with seven, next year, our average class size will be 19. And that's what it is this year as well. Second grade.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, that's okay. Just, I just wanted to point out kind of the averages. We are high. I consider for the age group, you know, first graders are six, second graders are seven, and we go up to 10, age 10. So having said that, you know, I'll, I'll put in my plug again, that it definitely is tight having 25 students in a class. And, you know, meeting their individual needs along with just giving them personal space. It's been wonderful to have 12 students in every class right now. It's, it's really made a huge impact on the attention given, their social, emotional state, which we weren't sure how they would come in. But it's been really very calm and, you know, the focus is on their education and making sure they're comfortable with us. And they come in every day with smiles, ready to start. So it's been great. All set, Scott?
Okay.
So our current staffing, we have 24 classroom teachers, one reading specialist. And for special educators, we have 5.6, which what we've done is we've hired some of our interventionists. Well, three of the interventionists have special education certification, so they also case manage students through special education. It's .2 of their position. So we've been able to maximize our case management, where we're, we're not overloading any individual. And those people also work with our regular education students who might need an intervention for a short period of time in order to, you know, overcome some of the struggles they're having in either reading or mathematics. Related service, we have a full-time occupational therapist. We have 1.4 speech, so that's one speech path with us. And then two days with another, having another. One guidance counselor and a .7 school psychologist. We have 18 paraprofessionals who mostly work one-to-one with our students, but we have a few that are shared. Paraprofessionals that might be two-to-one or, or three-to-one for student support. Three unified arts teachers, full-time, art, music, and PE. We have one media specialist, and then she has a part-time library para. We have one nurse, two building administrators, and two and a half administrative assistants. So the half is, half a special ed secretary that, that works during the morning each, each day. So our noteworthy changes are very similar to Jerry's, the technical program equipment rental. There's an increase of 5,000 and partially offset to, by decrease of the toner supply. So we've moved from our general supplies, we've moved our toner supplies to the technical program equipment rental line. So then there was a decrease in the general supplies for that movement. Special education new equipment was a decrease that's driven by student need. And so this coming year, we, we do not have the need for, for new equipment that we know of at this time. And the maintenance line, the decrease, which Scott already explained, which is having someone in-house, hiring someone in-house instead, which was, that's the Maple Avenue portion.
Suzanne, if I may, I just wanted to jump in on that first one with regard to the increase of the, the equipment rental, that line, that 442 line. You're going to see this at every school as well. In working with our IT Director, Steve Bourget, we have what's called a managed print solution to all of our network printers. And there's what, a couple hundred of them, right, Steve? There's, there's a lot throughout all the buildings. And what we do now is, in the past, the prior practice was when a particular printer needed toner, that person would go to the building secretary, and they would order toner through a company and through a PO. We'd get delivered, et cetera, and there would be a lot of POs, purchase orders. Now what happens is, because they're network printers, when the toner gets to about 10, 15%, it sends a message automatically to this company who then drop ships the toner. So we don't have a lot of supply in our supply rooms, and it's kind of, you know, just-in-time type delivery of our toner. So we hope that it will help better, better manage that and also just reduce the time spent on ordering those types of things. I just want to let you know, you'll see that at every school.
All right, thank you, Scott. Thank you, Mrs. Pishka. I, I know Fred typed a question. Fred, if you can just ask that question again in case everyone didn't see that, please. Oh, you're muted.
I can read it for him. Fred, Fred's question was, how is the base budget determined? I assume same budget, but with contractual obligations for raises, et cetera, factored in, but wanted to confirm. So Scott, I'll take a shot at that, and then you please finish up. Fred, you're exactly correct. So the base budget, the way that we build it, is what we would consider the default budget. So consistent with RSA 4013, we put any outside of default spending in the new, the new column. And Fred, when we get closer to deliberations with the Budget Committee, you'll get a lot more information about all this. But that, that's exactly correct. Mr. Gross, anything you might add to that?
Just a couple of things for Denise's benefit. Dick Fletcher joined the Zoom call at 6:25 PM. Just wanted to let you know that. And so welcome, Dick. Fred, you are, Brian explained it perfectly. It is our default budget, which it does include, as you mentioned, contractual obligations for, for your, for your collective bargaining agreements. It does not include raises for non-collective bargaining employees.
Thank you. Thank you. I will just say, I was trying to unmute myself with the spacebar, only added spaces to the chat function instead of unmuting me. But you were much more eloquent in repeating the question, Superintendent Balky, than I would have been at saying it, on my own words.
That's quite all right, Fred. It looks like you're down under, so we'll, we'll give you the benefit of the doubt there. I did want to let the Chair know that Mrs. Vermakowicz emailed me her question. Scott and Dawn, in addition to Jerry, I will pose this question to you. Ellen was looking specifically at CIP items for Bartlett. And because Mrs. Vermakowicz is often very predictable in her questions, I would imagine she will be looking for a CIP explanation for each school. So why don't we plan to address Maple Ave and Bartlett?
And then when Mountain View and the High School presents, let's also plan to discuss CIP items as well as Scott and Dawn. If there's anything on what we call the mini CIP, which would be the items that would be just under the threshold for CIP. Scott, you want to speak to that?
And I think, I think I can, I can handle this one for not only the elementary schools, but Mountain View as well. So for this year in our CIP, we have three items, heating controls at both Bartlett and at Maple Avenue. That's one project. And for Mountain View Middle School, we have a repair to our, our fire cistern. This is where we keep our, it's the tank that pretty much holds our, our reserve water in case there was a fire for the, for the sprinkler system. So all three of those, they're not contained in this budget. But we do plan on using the capital reserve fund for, for, for those type activities. We have about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that capital reserve fund, which would be sufficient to proceed with those projects. Obviously with, with COVID nineteen, we have not put any of those out to bid. We're looking for a cheaper alternative on the Mountain View Middle School cistern. And we think it's a repairable thing, not so much a replacement. And then as far as the mini CIP is concerned, once again, there are opportunities there to use the capital reserve fund and not to put those in using budget dollars. So there's nothing in either the CIP or the mini CIP, again, those items that, that don't meet that threshold for CIP, in this budget.
Thank you Scott, Ellen, I saw your hand up, are you able to talk? Oh, you can.
I can see, I got back, I'm back.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm so predictable. We're looking at a budget that is the twenty-one, twenty-two. So on CIP is eighty-five thousand dollars at Bartlett for window replacement.
No, that would be the following, see that, the issue that we have Ellen is that's a, the town of Goffstown is on a different fiscal year. So it gets a little bit confusing. Okay, so there, there are January to December fiscal year and we're obviously July through June. So that, I can talk to you offline about how that, how that all gins out, but it's six months kind of behind, yeah.
Well, that's darn confusing when we do that at CIP.
Yes.
Okay, I'll speak with you another time about where these things go with regard to budget, thank you.
Okeydoke.
All right, thank you Ellen, thank you Scott. So are we all set with Maple Avenue before we move on to Mountain View?
I'm scanning and I don't see anybody with a question.
Yeah, I don't either.
I don't either.
Okay, all right, perfect. Well, thank you, Mrs. Pishka. And if Mrs. Kohler is ready, we can start with Mountain View.
Good evening, everyone. I'm actually going to be co-presenting with my assistant principal, Josh Lewis, tonight. So I'm actually going to have Josh start off.
All right, great, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. So for FY twenty-twenty-one budget was ten million, one hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. Our fiscal year twenty-twenty-two base was ten million, it was ten million, five hundred seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. With the new addition of eleven thousand, three hundred and forty dollars, we are having a FY twenty-twenty-two requested of ten million, five hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars. And that is a, a difference in FY twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two versus twenty-one of four hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Just looking at some of our projected class size for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, you can see that our fifth graders are at a twenty-to-one ratio. Sixth graders at twenty-two-to-one, seventh grade at twenty-three-to-one, and eighth grade is at twenty-two-to-one. Looking ahead at the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year, fifth grade will be at a twenty-three-to-one ratio because we do have a big jump in our fifth graders coming in. Sixth grade at a twenty-to-one ratio, seventh grade at twenty-one-to-one, and eighth grade at twenty-three-to-one. Overall, we're looking at an increase of about ten students across the board. Staffing overview, we have forty core content teachers, three reading and literacy teachers, eighteen special educators. That includes our OT, speech and language, school psychologist. We have thirteen unified arts teachers, half a Title One teacher, three guidance counselors, one librarian, two nurses, five administrative assistants, two of which are part-time, and five administrators. I should also add that we didn't have on here, we have thirty paraprofessionals. And we are also looking forward into next year, not looking to add any additional staff at this time.
For noteworthy increases, in the regular ed equipment rental line, Scott had already talked about on the fact that you were going to see an increase. For Mountain View, it's an increase of four thousand dollars. And again, you are going to see a corresponding decrease with the toner that he just talked about in another line coming up. In the Mountain View Athletic Other Professionals line, you're going to see an increase of three hundred and forty-five dollars. This is because there has been a slight increase in the cost of officials and assigners for our athletic contests. In the principals and other professionals line, Brian and Scott talked about on Monday evening, the need per our area agreement to have an appraisal at the middle school. You will see an increase of six thousand dollars in this line and you are going to see a similar amount when Goffstown High School presents later on this evening. In the athletics student transportation line, there's going to be an increase of seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. This is because with our transportation, we're going to see an increase of three percent for bus transportation next year. And that's with a hundred and one trips that all of our athletics teams make over the course of a whole school year. And again, going with transportation for our field trip line, you're going to see an increase of a hundred and fifty dollars, again, just showing that increase. The rest of the budget that you see is the salary and benefit agreements for our professional and support staff contracts. I also did want to mention that there is a three thousand dollar increase for our Mountain View Middle School Resource Officer. And that's due to the MOU that we have with the Goffstown Police Department. For noteworthy decreases, in the science general supplies line, we have a decrease of three thousand dollars. As you're aware, we have started rolling with our Pearson Science programming and a lot of the things that we needed to buy to start that program off, we are in very good shape with, so we're able to decrease that line. In the regular ed general supplies line, we're looking for an increase of three thousand dollars. And that goes back to the toner that both Suzanne, Jerry, and Scott talked about earlier. In the Mountain View Regular Ed Books and Printed Materials line, that's a decrease of nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Eight thousand dollars of that decrease was because we had a multi-year contract for our second step anti-bullying program. So you, you will see that again in the future, but for next year, we're able to decrease that line. And we were also able to get a really good deal on one of our consumable workbooks for next year as well and get something for half price. So the other part of that fifteen hundred dollars is for some consumable workbooks. In the special ed testing line, the decrease of one thousand sixteen dollars. This year, we were able to get some new special ed testing pamphlets that we needed to get for our special ed teachers. So we will be all set for that. In the school library general supplies line, a decrease of three hundred dollars. And again, that had to do with toner as well. And in the building and maintenance line, a decrease of fifteen thousand, seven dollars. And that is again, going back to the savings in HVAC maintenance costs that Scott talked about earlier. Are there any questions for us?
Thank you, Scott, can you put the screen back up so I can see everyone? Thank you. So is there any questions for Mr. Lewis or Mrs. Kohler or comments from anyone? I am not, oh. I don't think anybody.
Not seeing anyone.
All right, I don't see anything, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Yeah, I guess you didn't see my hand go up Heather, I'm sorry.
Jared, I didn't see it, go ahead Jared.
It's quite all right. Just a general question, I know that in the prior years, we had purchased sound amplification equipment for some of our students. Do we expect to have to purchase any of that material again for this year?
Wendy?
We did actually purchase two more of those this year.
So we have been working on, just like we do with our furniture line, Jared, is as some of our equipment gets older and the battery life is not as long. We have set up kind of a replacement cycle for those older equipments. So that's what you're seeing for it staying flat in that line.
Okay, so we are planning on doing some purchasing in that line just as a replacement for obsolete equipment.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you Jared.
Jared, I just need to give you a little context there, just for all schools. So for our elementary schools and Mountain View, we are trying to replace classrooms. And I think at a couple, I think at Bartlett, we're trying to make sure that every classroom has that sound amplification system. However, at the high school, it's a little bit different. Students move in between classes. So we're, in those situations, we purchase portable type sound amplification systems. And last year, or in this current budget, we, we did purchase, or we are, we will be purch, I think we did purchase, I know I did the PO on that. We did purchase those, those pieces of equipment. But in next year's budget, there wasn't student needs that, that drove that, so we took it out. And you'll see that at the, when the high school presents. Okay, so that, that's at the high school level Scott, not at the middle school, which we're currently on. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. So if there's no other questions or comments, we'll move on to the high school with Mr. McBride and Ms. McCann.
There was one more.
Oh, there was another one?
Yeah. Man, sorry.
Yep.
This is me. Um.
Oh, it's Ginny, okay, sorry Ginny, I kept going back and forth, I didn't see your hand.
It was, this actually is a question that I should have asked before. But I know we added a half-time administrator to Bartlett and Glen Lake. And I was just wondering, has any thought been made to increase that to a full-time person in the future? Because I know we're increasing all the time at Glen Lake, very busy place, especially with the addition of the portables. Any thought, I know we have to keep our budget low, but has any thought been made to when we may need to add some extra help towards them?
I'd, I'd be happy to field that, that's a very good question Ginny, thank you for that. First of all, I, I would like to just say that Brandy Williams, who is filling that role, is spectacular and has done a wonderful job. We're very proud of Brandy, she's doing a really tremendous work in both locations. The split actually isn't fifty-fifty, I think it's more, more like sixty, forty. Kathy and Jerry, does that sound right, Brandy? But, you know, it, it's a tricky thing because we are not a school district that is administrative heavy. That was a wonderful addition a few years ago when we made it to really help out Mrs. Stoyl, who has a, a really complicated operation. It's Glen Lake School, because we have our mandated special education preschool for ages three and four, as well as the transition out of preschool into kindergarten and then the transition into first grade. There are just a lot of moving parts, there are home visits that are involved. We have to have by federal and state special education requirements. We have to have IEPs, an individualized education plan developed for eligible children. They have to be tested and they have to have their plan written before they turn age three. And there's a lot that goes into that in working with our families. So I think at this point Ginny, we're very appreciative of the support for that position. And we are not looking to increase at this time. But it is definitely an area that we continue to watch.
Thank you.
Are you good Ginny?
Yep, thank you.
All right, you're welcome, thank you Brian. Okay, so I keep scrolling, I don't see anyone else's hand, so we can move on to the high school.
So I, I would imagine that Mr. McBride will probably want to have a few remarks and then he will likely pass it off to Mrs. McCann. So Mr. McBride.
I might be as predictable as Ellen in, in that, I, I'll keep two themes going. One is brevity and two, thank you. So again, I, as I'm going to echo Brian, to the school board members and to the budget committee members, thank you for serving. It clearly makes a difference. And, and one little funny before I hand it off to Kim, a comment to Kim is that Kim reached out like an hour ago and said that her, her internet connection was shaky when the storm blew through. And it wasn't as scary as when she had her children over a decade ago, but it was pretty scary for me. But she still has her internet, internet connectivity. And, and before I do hand it to Kim, that Kim's value and her contributions to Goffstown High School are just, they're off the charts. And that's an understatement. During a global pandemic, you can square that, the contribution. So again, I can't thank Kim enough for all that she does for the students and the families of Goffstown High School. So with that, I will be quiet and hand it off to Kim.
Thank you. So as you can see right off this first page, our, our budget presentation is going to be extremely similar to everything you've heard from all of the other schools to date. We are looking at roughly three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars difference between our proposed fiscal year twenty-two and the current budget that we are working under. And of that, five thousand dollars is new spending. The rest are all of the contractual obligations and the changes relative to retirement contributions that you've heard about over the other presentations this evening as well as Monday night. Our historical enrollments, as you can see, we still stay pretty steady. We do have a couple of smaller classes in the building right now and they were a little smaller as they had gone through the district. And based on our current class of twenty-twenty-one and the current eighth grade at Mountain View, we are looking at a projected October one of twenty-twenty-one enrollment of one thousand and thirty-five students, which is pretty consistent with where we've been. We continue to have a lot of unexpected movement into the, the high school. We have seen over the last few years that our summer numbers have increased anywhere from thirty to fifty students. And, and we would anticipate that with real estate processes in the town, that we would continue to see something very similar going into next school year as well. When we look at our staffing, it has stayed very, very steady. We have not added new positions. As you'll see, we're slightly under a hundred full-time equivalent teachers, thirty-one paraprofessionals. Our secretarial staff stays steady at six point three. And this covers everything from our office staff, special education, our school counseling office, the adult ed program, as well as athletic and facility support for the building. We have eight administrators across all of those pieces, including the adult education program, a school counseling staff of seven. And our kitchen and custodial numbers have stayed flat as well as our nursing staff for the high school. And we did make note here that while our budgeted staffing has not changed, we were unable to hire four and a half teachers going into this school year. Science positions continue to be incredibly challenging to fill in, in a high school setting, especially finding really high-quality educators. And we also had a number of real late staffing changes this year, as was to be expected, given the pandemic and, and folks making decisions about right now what works for them and their families. And what we were able to do was take a hard look at, at our numbers, tighten up some of our section offerings, which created a little bit less flexibility in the schedule for kids. And we also opted to hire our current staffing for some additional teaching sections to offset that and make sure we were able to offer, can, continue to offer the pro, full program that we would look to have for our students. And when we look at class sizes, it's always very different when we talk about the high school typically. Until you get to us, you kind of see grade level numbers and, and what those average class sizes look like. As a reminder, at the high school level, schedules and class sizes are fully driven by student choice. So on an annual basis, we rebuild our schedule from scratch. We take all of the student and family requests for courses. We evaluate what our needs are based on that in comparison to our existing teaching staff. We determine how many sections of everything we can offer and we build a schedule based on that. And we have different parameters based on different parts of the buildings. Our technical education classes, for example, have different requirements in terms of class sizes than our science labs, than our humanities classrooms. So you definitely see a variance at the high school. This year, we did want to share that our in-person hybrid classes, we capped at twenty when we were building the schedule. And, and this was a twofold process. One, it's looking to make sure we can provide appropriate social distancing within our current model and any potential future shifts we have along that reopening continuum. But we also needed to give ourselves some room to play with sizes then when the cohorts were broken down further. But we also needed to give ourselves some room to play with sizes then when the cohorts were broken down further. We've looked to keep class cohort sizes on different days within the hybrid model at no greater than twelve. This allows six foot of distancing in the classrooms between students. We do have a couple of anomalies. There are some classes that there is only one section of. So for example, a French four class. If there were twenty-five students who wanted it. The odds were not going to be in our favor that it would be a nice, clean alphabetical split. So on one day, we might have seven kids and on the other day, we have fourteen or fifteen. And we're using different spaces and offering different spaces in the building for teachers to to teach during those times. And we have our fully online academy as well this year and class sizes in that range pretty dramatically as well. Given student choice, but we have capped all of the online classes at thirty, given that we don't have the same physical space requirements. When we look at the budget and notable items, a lot of this is exactly what you have heard already. Almost all of our non-salary budget lines were level funded from last year going into this year. One-time purchases that were made were taken out, as Scott talked about, the FM systems in particular. And we have a significant decrease in the contracted services relative to the shift in our HVAC piece. The managed print and the other big thing is that you will see a continuation of the computer lab replacement that we had talked about last year. And so that number does carry over and you will see the twenty-five thousand dollars to continue that work specifically down. In our technical education wing of the building. And then the increases, as we said, it's about five thousand dollars of new spending total that's being asked for. The first one, there's about thirteen hundred dollars. All of the online resources available through our information center. So these are going to be. Online journals, periodicals, research pieces that students have access to typically see about a five percent increase from year to year. And over the last couple of years, we've shifted the dollars from print materials to that line. But feeling that it's it's time to to. Include that increase in the budget so that we can maintain some of the other spending in our library. And then we also have some slight increases around our transportation for athletics, field trips, vocational programming. And that is is contractual as well. And that's that's it for spending.
Thank you. I see Fred had a question. Fred?
Yes, I did not really understand cohort. Is that how you split a class?
Yeah, so Fred, this is part of our hybrid model where we're only bringing half the students into the building on a given day. So we we divided all of the students into two separate cohorts. So students are currently attending on either Monday and Wednesday or Tuesday and Thursday.
Merci beaucoup. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Thank you, Kim. Does anybody else have any questions or comments for Kim before we finish with the high school?
Mr. Gross, do you want to speak to C I P, please?
With respect to C I P, as I mentioned earlier with Ellen's question is. For those of you in the budget committee, so that you're aware, the town of Gostown has what's called a capital improvements. Plan, C I P, and that looks at expenditures, capital expenditures over twenty-five thousand dollars over the next six years. And they do that to try to balance out the tax rate and it's for planning-type purposes. With that, however, you know, you need to try to look at how you're going to, you know, budget for those capital expenditures. Now, the school board has a relatively, you know, new tool and that is their capital reserve fund. So the last couple of years, the voters have been gracious enough to deposit two hundred thousand dollars in successive years. For these capital-type projects. To give you a good example, we spent about forty thousand dollars this past summer. To replace stairs that were falling apart at Gostown High School in the rear of the school. And we use capital reserve funds in order to do that. With respect to this year's C I P, we had, like I said before, heating controls projects as well at two elementary schools. As well as a repair of a cistern, a tank at Mountain View Middle School. So those are the. Those are the three projects that I know Randy is working on. We have not put those out to bid yet. But if and when we do, the plan would be to use capital reserve fund monies and not. Put those into the operating budget. With respect to that mini C I P, same thing, we might see, when we say mini C I P, the school board has developed a list of items that might need replacement. That fall under that twenty-five thousand dollar threshold. And once again, those types of items, we would, we would look to our our capital reserve fund. To to fund those types of repairs. So there's, there aren't any items that are in the C I P. This year that would be incorporated into this budget.
And Mr. Gross, if I can just add to that, please. The school board, I just want to make sure the budget committee is aware, the school board has not deliberated on the. Capital reserve fund yet, but we did want to just make sure. To call in the budget committee that the school board will be taking up that discussion further. They will be deliberating on an amount. They will look at anticipated projects as well as some of the unforeseen things that sometimes can go wrong. So. We do want to let the budget committee know that the school board will be deliberating further, but at this point, we just wanted to essentially give you notice. Of our intent to likely have a warrant article unique and specific for the capital reserve fund, but at this point, we have not discussed a dollar amount. But we would plan to have that fully established prior to your deliberations in November.
Great, thank you, Brian. And I see, Scott, did you have anything else to add before I call on Ginny?
No, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Great. Okay, go ahead, Ginny. You had your hand up.
Yes, Kim, the positions that you weren't able to fill this year, are you still looking to fill those positions? Or have you solidified the schedule for the year?
Yeah, so Ginny, that's an interesting question and it's and it's always an interesting challenge. We just had this conversation again recently. So in terms of the schedule for students, it's definitely solidified. The positions are still open. We continue to kind of watch and see what's there. But we've also contracted with our current staff to teach those classes, right? So you know, it's always that delicate balance of how much is too much for folks, but at the same time respecting the fact that. You know, they've made a commitment to teach those classes. They've built a relationship now with the students and. What what is the the larger good right now? And and I think we're at this point, we're looking to kind of hold unless something significantly changed with a current staff member.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ginny. Thank you, Kim. Does anybody else have any other comments or questions? I'm not seeing, I'm sorry, I'm just scrolling through everybody's name.
I'm not seeing anybody.
I don't see anybody. So.
Heather, I did, I did have one more thing to share with the.
Sure.
The school board and the budget committee in terms of what the process will look like in terms of reviewing the budgets. And if I can just spend about five or 10 minutes on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, I'm going to share my screen. And what you see here is typically what the school board and the budget committee look at, and that's your your proposed budget with actuals from. In this case, two thousand eighteen through two thousand and twenty. So our fiscal year, school fiscal year ended in June of two thousand twenty. And what I wanted to point out is that, you know, typically when we look at budgets and we review the budgets, we do take a look at our spending. Over the last three years with a, with more weight or emphasis, you know, on say nineteen and twenty than we would on say eighteen. But last year was just a crazy year. So it was the COVID year and we're in the COVID year again. So I wanted to highlight a few things, just to let you know that. We did in prep and preparing for this budget, we did take a look at things. But we also had to have an eye towards just the weirdness of this last year. So if you look at the first highlight. You'll see that we typically budget about a hundred and seventy, I'm sorry, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for teacher substitutes. In two thousand and nineteen, we spent almost three hundred thousand. And the reason that was the case is because we had a good deal of. Leaves that we had to cover. Those were related, I think, mostly to maternity-type leaves. So it was a little higher than usual. Then last year, because we, the schools were closed by mid-March, we saw a decrease in what we would spend on teacher substitutes. So looking at one fifty-four, we couldn't do it in, you know, a non-COVID year at a hundred and fifty-four thousand. So we did it, we level funded that line. If I go down a little bit further to another page, you'll see at the bottom, I'm going to try to bring it up. Bear with me a second. Can you see at the bottom here, it says computers and network equipment? So last year, in prior years, forty-three hundred dollars, almost four thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Well. As you know, when we went to remote learning, our, the servers that we've had were not. They were not in a position to withstand that type of use. And our I T director, we had to replace, I think it was two, we had a server virtualization project. We had to expedite that. We also had to buy Chromebooks and laptops, et cetera. So. A big increase. Are we asking for that same amount again this year? No, we're asking for five thousand dollars. So I wanted you, just to give you some examples of. Kind of the, it's going to be a different year. We typically look at at actuals. You're still going to look at actuals, but there's going to be a story. Behind twenty-twenty in particular. So, you know, I look at at folks at all of our schools and our supply lines were. Were down in like general classroom supplies, but they were way up in facility supplies because we were buying P P E. We were buying, you know, in preparation, we weren't sure what was going on. So we bought P P E. We started to buy desk shields, et cetera. So you're going to see a lot of like very large increases and decreases in certain lines. We we truly had to operate as a, as a bottom-line budget. In that fiscal year twenty-twenty and we're doing it very similar this year because, you know, we're trying to hold off on certain purchases, not knowing what the future. Is going to hold in terms of more P P E purchases or other types of costs. On the flip side, if I were to go to, I might go to the transportation line is another good example. You know, while we did save some money on transportation last year because school wasn't in session. This year, we also are seeing a corresponding ten percent increase in this year's budget because that was our contract with the bus company. And then for next year, it's a three percent increase by the contract. So I just wanted to share with you and I'll stop sharing now that. It's a, it's going to be a lot of, I'm sure it might be a lot of questions, but. Recognize the fact that we had to shift monies around in order to make last year work and we're doing the same thing this year. As I think it was Kim McCann stated. You know, when you can't get four or five teachers and you have to do certain things, you're going to see certain lines go up, certain lines go down. It's just kind of been the nature, the nature of things. So I'll be more than happy. To respond to any and all questions as to why we did what we did, but I just want you to know that it's going to be a little challenging.
Thank you, Scott. I appreciate that. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Scott at this time? I'm just scrolling through names. I don't see anybody.
Yeah, so Heather, also for process, for those who are new to the budget committee. You know, we have done these joint presentations before and I so appreciate you doing it this year with us. I really can't thank you enough. So now what happens is the school board will go through this proposed budget over the next two or perhaps three school board meetings. Once they. Finish with their review, then I essentially would then deliver the school board's proposed budget to Cole. And at that particular point, if there's been any adjustments that have been made, then you will be getting essentially a new spreadsheet. A new budget with what the school board did in terms of their adjustments. The revenues are likely not going to change a whole lot, but there is a possibility that this budget could, you know, could change. And that's how the process has worked, you know, in the past. And and with that, you get a paper copy and I can also provide you with electronic copies. This copy right here is on the school's website. As well as the notes that are associated with it, as well as all the presentations are all on the the school, the Gostown School District website.
Great, thank you. All right, thank you so much. So I don't see any comments or questions. For Scott or anybody. So before we adjourn the meeting, I would like to also again thank the budget committee for joining us, all our administrators, our principals, putting on fantastic presentations as always. We really do appreciate it. I'm adding to Scott's update with school board meetings. This is for the school board. Our next school board meeting will be Monday, October nineteenth, and we are going to start at six that night because we have not only a school board meeting, but we also have to start working on budget. The next one will be Wednesday, October twenty-first, also at six. And if needed, we have another one on October twenty-sixth at six o'clock, all for budget workshops. They will be at the high school library and they will be back in person and on G T V. For those that cannot make it, we'll make, set up a conference call for you. And you'll have all, your packets are at the S A U if you need them to make any notes. So if there's anything else, I can take that now. If not, we can, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Brian, do you have anything else?
No, just again, my appreciation to to all and Mr. Gross, please don't close the Zoom out. I'd like to ask all administrators to please stay on. For just a quick, a quick minute after we close the public meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
Heather, this is Jared. Yeah, I will second Ellen's motion.
Ellen, you're making a motion to adjourn and Jared is second. All right, so I have to do a roll call, so I need to call on all school board members. Dan, oh no, he's not here. Ellen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Susanna?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yeah.
Jared?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Rheta?